Recording, so you can start whenever you want to start.
Okay, so I'm gonna wait just a minute, Marcus, we have meeting materials in front of us before we start.
Sure.
Soft and sandy.
Now, the town guys are like the dirt driveway, then they'll grow and everything. But then like the day to day salt and new stuff is our crew, isn't it? How was it last night? I know last night was hard because everywhere was super easy.
Yeah, it's not very new.
The dirt or driveway.
Is it collated? I mean, I don't, I don't know what it, I didn't look. We're gonna be collating some data here, I'm gonna go and start the meeting now, we have the paper to pass out as we, as we get going.
Sure.
Is it just four pages?
We don't know.
No.
Thirteen, thirteen pages. So you're looking at thirteen pages.
Oh, these are just pages.
Well, because it's coming up. Okay, so it's since it's six, six oh two, six oh three, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Danville Board of Directors, it's Thursday, January the eleventh. Uh, we have one member on remote, so we have to introduce ourselves, I'll start on playing Fargo Board Chair. Next to me, Dave.
Uh, Dave Tolby, chair.
In the room.
Uh, Molly Lee Sinclark.
Tim Sammorn, board member.
And Melissa.
On the board member.
Okay, we have two building principals in the room.
Sarah Welch, principal.
Natalie Conway, principal.
We have, um, superintendent. Mike, say hello.
Mike and Jesse, Director of Operations Finance.
We have three members of the building committee here as well, um, Lance Warren, Eric Hewitt. You know. I know. Allison Desper. I know, sorry, Allison.
No worries.
So, we're all here, we're waiting on some paperwork to come, in the meantime, are there any additions or changes to the agenda? I had one yesterday, we were looking at, I added in the warning as an action item to consider later. Um, just the wording of it, uh, so I, I know you got, you guys all got a copy of that today as well. So we'll go over that as well later, but it's not, none of that's valid until we get through this budget. And hopefully we can get through this budget. So I assume there are no issues or changes to the agenda that I don't know about? All right, hearing none, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward to the business of the board. And we're collating pages, Mike, we don't have pieces of paper. So for the public, so we're collating the thirteen pages, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to get started. On the FY twenty five budget, we got this at two thirty with your latest tweak, so I just wanted you to know what those are.
You're muted, Mike.
Yeah, I apologize, Adobe Acrobat is, uh, I'm dumping all of the chairs, I'm not happy with it, um, anyway, let's just talk about the budget, um. All right, where do we want, since this, this is the second time around, nothing materially has changed. Um, but I just wanna, you know, go over it again, I guess, to, to show the board and yourselves what's going on here.
I think that would be great, Mike.
Yep, so, I mean, I, I guess I could drive, so we can go page by page. Mark, you wanna make, allow me to be a presenter here?
You are.
Good, perfect. All right.
We're working on that.
Oh, you're doing that.
We're having some, okay, I don't say, Mike, we're having some collating issues and some printing issues.
If you, Allison, if you look at the minutes for the last meeting, that there's some minor tweaks.
Okay, so tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah.
And while we're waiting to collate these for everybody, can you go ahead and address for us, um, what happened today, what, what? Why there is the delay in getting it to us? Dave would like you to do that again.
Yeah, what happened was, it was supposed, it was gonna go out this morning. And there was literally some technical issues on, over on finance with Adobe Acrobat, and they, they tried to get it, Scott was working over there most of the, most of the morning, couldn't get it fixed, Mike. Called me up and I had him come over and I have a different version of it, or a standalone version on my computer, and we put this together. And sent it out at two thirty this afternoon, and the ten was not to send it out that late. Uh, you know, we, we try to get this stuff out on time, and I'm sorry that it took so long. I suppose we could have emailed you and told you that we were having trouble getting it sent out, but we were focused on getting it ready to go out, so. That's what happened.
Okay, another question, Dave?
Even, even getting it this morning wouldn't have, wouldn't have given me, I didn't know about anybody else, time to look at, I mean, you might as well. This is really, I'm getting it now, today at first.
Okay.
Yeah, what is, is, and since there, um, can we get stuff like this a few days in advance, like the principals' report, superintendent's report? That's something I'd, I'd really like to see, um.
Sooner. I, I get that, Dave, and with all due respect, this is not the only thing that we're doing. Okay, this is our number eight of board meetings for me this week. Okay?
This is the only one that matters.
Or desperate.
Yes, sir, um, so, I, I think that what's important, we looked at this budget last week. We have an idea of what the budget is and what came down today, these changes. Those are some of the things that we're gonna need to go through, what specifically was changed, because we have an idea of where we are with the cap. We have an idea of where we are with this, with, with the CLAs. But I don't know what small changes happened today, and so those are some things I'd like you to focus on today, so that we can catch ourselves up.
Sure, let's, 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 let's address these issues, all, all great points, again, apologize for laying, getting it out. Um, but I'll be honest, nothing's changed for, for your purpose. Me, what I mean by that is expenditures didn't change, revenues didn't change, ed spending didn't change. Your pre-CLA tax rate did not change, the only thing that changed were small tweaks. Because I was rushing to get the first version out, so for example, I'm trying to make sure that the data on this page ties to the tax rate summary page. So the kind of tweaks we're talking about are almost irrelevant for this discussion. So, from a, from a sense of what we budgeted for, and what you need to raise, less the revenues. And the impact on your tax rate is unchanged. So, that's all that really matters, right? I'm trying to get this thing ready for, in the event that approval tonight, be ready for the Tom report, and those were the last minute tweaks I was trying to do, and like I said, Adobe was not my friend. And, and, and by the way, Scott Marsh has been working on this Adobe Acrobat issue for the last two days, it's, it's, it was yesterday and today were the issues, to be honest, but anyway.
So Mike, in, in terms of, in terms of the, the spending, there is no change in the spending material, you thought, you're talking about some minute details. Um, can you go ahead and start over from the beginning at the spending, so that we can get this all back into our heads again?
Absolutely, so, uh, let's talk about the drivers real quick. I'm gonna start there, just as a, as a memory, a, a memory jog, all right. Uh, we are up almost seven hundred thousand. The twenty-five budget to the twenty-four budget. The main drivers are all listed here, and I think this is also on, on one of the printouts under the Tom report, let me see if there's, yeah, here's a much bigger version. Sorry. These are the drivers, number one, we got compensation and benefits of two point two FTEs are up. The two point two FTEs, as we previously discussed, were grant funded under ARPESR. Unfortunately, ARPESR money is going away. So, we wanna keep these resources and these people, because they're doing a great job. And as a result, uh, it's gonna cost locally now, so that comes out of the local budget. That's one seventy-five. All other compensation is up outside of these two point two FTEs, total of a hundred and forty-four. And as hopefully many of you remember, we had the collective bargain agreement. And the increases on those scales for those, uh, both certified teaching professionals as well as support staff. Then the lovely state of Vermont granted us a nice sixteen point four percent healthcare insurance up increase. And that's about two hundred thousand. The last three are smaller amounts, but they matter. Uh, CTE, which is the Career Technical Education, the vocation is up, dollar values are up. Uh, the ELO program, which is our after-school program, that was previously grant funded as well. And then obviously, we have a little bit sprinkled along books, supplies, and travel. The point is, uh, that explains ninety-four percent of this increase. Those are the drivers, just to jog everybody's memory. Okay, so now, let's go back to the very first page. As a reminder of how Danville funds its education. I'm hoping this looks, this looks familiar. So, thirty-two percent of the education needs are paid by residents. Sixty-eight percent are paid by non-residents, as you can see here, we have a resident line, non-residents, and then the general ed fund. Now, within this thirty-two percent that is paid by the residents, this split is as follows. We've got sixty-eight percent of this resident bucket here are paying either a flat two percent or an income sensitive rate, which for this year's budget will be two point seven nine percent of their income. And we'll get into that in the next slide on the income tax grid. Is there any questions so far? Okay, uh, ten percent are paying this combination of income sensitive and the homestead tax rate. And lastly, twenty-two percent pay that full homestead tax rate, which this year, if you were to proceed with the budget as presented, would be a dollar sixty-eight. Or sixteen eighty for every one hundred thousand dollars of house site value. And we'll go over the year-over-year increase and all that, uh, in just a minute. Any questions on how Danville funds its education?
Well.
All right.
Um, so now that I have two houses, um, maybe Shelley should have lived in one and I should have lived in the other, but we live in one. And so the other would be taxed as a non-resident.
The, and then we'll discuss that, we'll just.
Yeah.
If somebody else lives in it, and they, then you don't claim it as a homestead. So then you are, um, a business with a house, and so then you get taxed at the non-resident rate for that other house.
Right.
Okay, we have no objection.
In here too. Yeah, if you look on that page, it's right, it's right here, the non-residential tax rates on this page there, you could see, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get, we, we'll get to that when we get comparison, we'll go over all that stuff, non-resident, the income sensitive rate, all that. But yes, answer your question, I believe you can only have one home as your resident. Your main primary residence, the other one, or multiple if you had the ability to have more, would be non-residents.
Thank you, Michael.
Yep. All right, income tax grid, so based on the presented budget. This is how it would look. This is just a reminder, so up to forty-seven thousand dollars is a flat two percent of your income rate. As long as the homestead value does not exceed four hundred thousand, that's why you see, whether you live in a fifty thousand dollar humble abode or much larger ones, tested four hundred, you're paying seven hundred dollars regardless. Making sure that's clear. Same thing here for forty-seven thousand, as long as you don't exceed forty-seven thousand in homestead income. By the way, homestead income is defined as however, however many people are in that home earning money. My example is my wife and I, and my mother-in-law, she counts. Which is why I can never get in the income sensitive bracket. Unfortunately, so, here we go. Um, once you get over forty-seven thousand and one dollar up to a hundred and twenty, you are gonna be paying the income sensitive rate, two point seven nine. Actually, let me backtrack that, up to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand oh one. Uh, uh, sorry, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand even, the moment you go over one dollar over one thirty-seven, income sensitive rate does not apply, sorry for that confusion. However, as you start to climb up in the income bracket here, the four hundred thousand dollar threshold and homestead value ends at the ninety thousand dollar mark. The moment you go to ninety thousand and one dollar, your homestead value cannot exceed two twenty-five. Everybody with me so far? That's why this is dark gray, dark gray is income sensitive based on this rate and this rate. And the light gray up to a hundred and twenty thousand in income. And your home, homestead value stays at two twenty-five, you're okay, you're still paying the income sensitive rate. But after that, homestead value, you know, it, the point is that it's like a sliding scale, that's the best way to explain this.
So Mike, I've got a question that may be dumb, um, excluding the, the, the rates that are entered into the grid, this gray is true in every city in the state, correct?
Absolutely.
Well, well, not exactly. This is Mike, I thought towns, different communities have slightly different.
They, 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 they do, this is the rate that changes right here. For every town is gonna have a different income sensitive rate, and I'll explain the calculation on the next page. I can explain it on the next.
The, the, the grid itself minus the numbers that get added in is the same. A hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, yes, this right here, this right here, yeah, you're absolutely spot on, and this right here. What changes is, is when you plug in the income sensitive rate and the homestead tax, property tax rate, that's what drives the numbers inside this grid to change, but that's a great point, Clayton.
But those two numbers will be different from town to town, or it could be slightly different from town to town.
Correct, and I'll, I can explain that. So, on this three-year tax comparison, this is where you'll see how those rates get calculated, okay? The state provides two separate yield rates. One for the property yield and the other one for the income yield. Those yield rates divided by your ed spending per pupil is how you start to get to your tax rate calculation, so, in the example, here's the income yield. This tax rate is calculated by taking the, your per pupil spending and dividing it by your homestead income yield rate. So that's the pre-CLA income tax rate. Then of course, the wonderful CLA comes into effect. And you have to consider that. Actually, no, not for income, sorry, CLA doesn't matter for income, I'm sorry about that. So I, I meant to mention on the homestead, let's, let's finish income rate. You take per pupil divided by your income yield to get that percentage. Two point seven nine percent in this example, because you gotta carry it out two decimal places. Times point oh two, so that's how.
One question from the room, hold on, they spread from a, a building committee member.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just wanting to clarify, because how it, the pupil, the expenditure per pupil is now very different.
So we're not there yet.
Which are, but it, but it would impact, are you talking about the long-term weighted ADM being divided? Or are you talking about an actual real cost per pupil, because we have very different numbers now?
It's still the same formula, to my knowledge, and it hasn't changed. So you're right, long-term weighted average ADM numbers have changed. We're not using equalized pupil anymore, as evident on this line.
But what I'm wondering is, are you using the actual cost per student or the long-term weighted ADM to divide it? Talking about expenditure.
Neither.
Allison, you brought this up at the cabinet board meeting last night, and it's not a factor in, in calculating any of these. So you're, you're trying to create something that doesn't exist in the ed funding.
It's not, it's so.
You have to look at actual cost per pupil.
I think you did, that, we did go, my understanding is we determine actual cost per pupil after the, the long-term weighted ADM is combined with the yield to give you a number, and then the long-term, and then your cost per pupil would then be, you determine that based on those two numbers.
Well, what I wanna clarify, and it is very relevant, and I wanna make sure you guys understand this, because I don't know how it's being conveyed or not, is that with the long-term weighted ADM, you are basically taking your number of students, and in most cases doubling it. So your expenditure per, expenditure per pupil looks like it's half of what it really is.
Right, Mike, that, you did that, Mike, on that page, that fourteen thousand, you had this fourteen thousand dollars.
I just wanna make sure.
It's coming in the presentation.
Recognize, because it's a big difference to say expenditure per pupil is fourteen thousand, when it's really twenty-eight thousand.
But, but, what they're telling us with this new long-term weighted ADM is they're no longer, they didn't used to count kids. And I talked to you about this last Wednesday, they didn't use to count kids exactly, and they don't count kids exactly, now, everybody, a kid is worth more than a kid. Or, or less than a kid, or, or some portion of a kid, and so you, we don't determine our people costs based on heads.
Right, but you can still, very easily, if you wanna talk real numbers, and this is what I said at Cabot, was that what's starting to happen is we're entering into Wall Street, securities derivatives, who understands what? And what we can do to get a real clear understanding for us as a community is to take the total budget divided by the actual number of children, and then you get the real number per pupil. So it's much higher than what the L, the long-term weighted ADM really reflects, and I think that's important for us to keep in mind, the real actual number versus just the long-term weighted ADM, and what is being factored into that. So I just wanted to make sure that that is really clear, because they just shifted this with Act one twenty-seven. And it's very confusing for people, but it's making it look like the expenditure per pupil is twelve thousand to fifteen thousand, when it's really twenty-five to thirty thousand. And that's a big deal as a school to take into account what the real number is that we're spending per pupil. Sorry, I just wanna.
It may not be twenty-five to thirty thousand, but it's definitely more than.
In most of the schools I've looked at, like when I did the budget here, based on what I saw for Danville at three hundred students, which is the number according to the state right now.
That's not, that's not, that's not accurate, but that wasn't accurate.
But, but, but then you have to minus the pre-K and the EEE, which, which is very different than like a K through twelve. So say you were at, okay, you could take three forty, you could take the budget of eight thousand, eight million four hundred thousand divided by three forty, and we're gonna see where we really are compared to what the long-term weighted ADM really tries to say. And I think as you talk about it, we have to look at that piece. So I just wanted to be clear on that, because it's very confusing for towns right now.
It is, so what you're also talking about, and what we talked about, is they take this stuff out of our control. And so we have to convey these messages to people, but some, the, the, the words they use, the way they apply the formulas, and what they, the numbers that they give us are not in our control.
Right, and I understand.
So, I know, I know, so, we.
But it's still like.
When we convey the message to the town, is, this is what I said, the word incomprehensible is in the paper.
Right.
It says, it's, it's difficult for me to explain it to you as a person, because.
And when you vote just up, you know, here, where we're just voting yea or nay.
I know.
Basically, that's all we can do, I think what we really have to recognize is, we're up three-quarter of a million dollars from last year, basically, and, and, and why, and what does that equate to per pupil? You know, that's a really big, it's an important piece for understanding how much we're spending.
But, so. You can't minus out preschool in that, in your calculations, and then, because preschool counts.
Preschool counts.
Yes. You can't minus out tuition kids, because tuition kids count, and tuition kids aren't in your numbers.
Yeah.
So sometimes if you, if you say I'm gonna minus out this one, I'm gonna minus out this one, the number becomes exorbitant, you're minusing out kids that count.
Yeah.
Even heads, even if you count them head by head by head by head.
Right.
And you're gonna say I'm gonna minus out the preschool kids, and I'm gonna minus out the tuition kids.
Whatever number you agree on, whatever number you determine, my three hundred was based on what the Vermont State number said, if that's off, then I apologize.
Yeah, it's not right.
Okay, but so what we could really just keep in mind is we take that number, and we divide the budget by that number, and we will have more clarity of how much as a community are we taking on and spending, and that's important moving forward, because obviously we all know, it's going up. It is important, regardless of what people say.
What?
So.
We're not saying it's not. He's not saying, he's not saying, saying it's not either, what he's, what he's saying is that, that, right now, for these numbers is, we have to use long-term weighted ADM, because it came over from a pelear.
I know.
And so we have to count our kids this way.
Yes, I understand that.
And so, but it's when we convey the message, and this is the hard part of this, is how do we convey the message to the people? And they wanna know why are my taxes up, and they wanna know how many kids do you have? And so now, when they say how many kids do you have, do I give them a two thousand-word explanation on what it means to be here for long-term weighted ADM? Or do I say there are nineteen fourth graders?
But the way that you, you, ADM works is if someone says, well, how much are we paying per pupil? The long-term weighted ADM allows you to stay twelve to fifteen thousand, when in fact, it's not twelve to fifteen thousand, it's twenty-five to thirty thousand. And that's a big deal for a community member to look at, especially with dwindling, dwindling numbers and raising taxes, I'm just coming to.
We're gonna move on.
Thank you.
Thank, thank.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mike, sorry. No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
It's okay, no, I, I, I hear it all, I understand the points, but for tonight's discussion, I think we need to stay focused on how the state wants us to um, calculate for tax purposes, right? What we have available to us, that's a whole separate discussion, um, on what was brought up previously. All right. Okay, so, let's, let's stay focused here, I guess, um. So we, we were on the income sensitive rate and how it gets calculated by taking the ed spending per pupil, which uses a long-term weighted average ADM, in prior years it was equalized pupils. Now it is no longer that, and it divides it by the year, income yield rate, which this year, released in December, was ten three hundred. All right, and we have to multiply times point oh two to get your actual income sensitive rate. Last year was two point four one, the year before that was two point three three, and this rate will differ, because a lot of towns have a different per pupil spending, they all use the same, uh, denominator of the ten-three in the yield, but that's why, to Mark's point, and what we brought up earlier, this income sensitive rate will differ from community to community, because they all have different ed spending per pupil numbers. All right. Now, let's pause, the state also provides a property yield rate. In order to calculate the pre-CLA rate, you take that same spending per pupil divided by the yield rate. Now, in this case, doing that would have meant that the pre-CLA rate for Danville would be a dollar fifty-two. However, our friend Molly brought up, hey, Mike, go back to that page. Page, um, and, and show us this, this comparison, and this actually matters. Because under sec, section seven of Act one twenty-seven, they're saying, we realize in fiscal twenty-four, long-term weighted average ADM pupils did not exist. But we're gonna provide those numbers to you as if they did exist, and we need you to do this comparison. Meaning, compare twenty-four, as if it had existed, what would that ed spending per pupil be? And do it the same way in twenty-five. What this shows is the increase year-over-year is only one point nine percent, this is good news. This means we will get the five percent protection. And that's critical. Some towns are not gonna be getting that, or they had to cut significant amounts out of their budget in order to get that. So now, why does that five percent pre-CLA cap matter? Here's why it matters, instead of a dollar fifty-two, it's a dollar forty-four for Danville. Five percent of last year's pre-CLA rate. Now, you take the CLA, you take this pre-CLA rate divided by the CLA, you get your homestead tax. you take this pre CLA rate divided by the CLA, you get your homestead tax rate, which is a dollar sixty eight. And that is a twenty three cent increase from last year. Up sixteen percent essentially. And then I think Dave was the one that brought up, well, what's my non resident rate? Well, you take the pre CLA non residential rate, which a state provides, but you have to throw in your CLA. So you take that pre CLA non residential rate divided by your CLA and you get the non resident rate, which ironically this year is the same as the homestead. I don't think I've ever seen that before. I just noticed it now.
It's an accident. It's a math- it's mathematical accident.
It is. It's too coincidental. I don't think I've ever seen that in my five, four and a half years of doing this. So Dave, you're paying the same rate no matter what. That's kind of funny.
We have a dollar sixty eight, a dollar sixty eight, sixty eight percent of our uh taxes are paid from out of state sources and sixty eight percent of our people don't pay on the income. Everything is sixty eight and it's very confused. And the reason I bring this up is and now I realize that, you know, you you might have a beautiful home and a camp on Joe's pond. So now, uh you know, I understand that, understand it better, that you you have your home and, you know, another property. Um now I'm I'm understanding that side of it now. You live in the cheap one, right? That's where you you live in the cheap.
All right. So compared to what we saw the last time and the last meeting, nothing's changed. I'm just trying to get this report to be more in line with like proofread and ready for print. So so anyone's concerns, I do again, apologize for getting it out, but late it is, but it nothing's changed from our last meeting. Um so this is just another summary that reflects what we just we just went over. Um just a smaller set of numbers, trying to be more condensed, more succinct. But it reflects everything, income sensitive, the non residential, the homestead, walks you through everything. This home value and income tab, we try to present this to show people on every one hundred thousand dollars of assessed. Here here's how it would fall out. So on a hundred thousand dollar home, it would be sixteen eighty three. On a three hundred thousand dollar home, you're looking at about five thousand.
That's if you're paying the homestead tax rate.
Correct, which cor- correct, but again, it's the same for this year. So your non residential will be the same amounts. Yep. And then this down here shows, okay, forty seven thousand because that's the the threshold for the flat two percent. And this other one shows the ninety, which is the upper echelon of the income sensitive rate, get just income sensitive. As long as your home is less than four hundred thousand, this is what your property taxes would be. Ninety nine hundred and forty, if you're in the forty seven thousand or less. Right? And then and then twenty five thirteen, if you're in that ninety thousand bucket. That would be up four hundred dollars from last year, by the way. If you're at this income threshold. All right, uh revenue wise, we can review this. I was a little more conservative on the incoming tuition. I'm only estimating thirty kids because we are showing a decline declining enrollment in tuitioning in kids over the last couple of years, so I don't, I don't want to be off. I don't want to um be too aggressive in that income side because that that matters, right? Uh tuition, I mean, interest is way up uh because we're in a much higher interest rate environment and managing the money well. Especially with the help of Phyllis, who is outstanding. She helps me move money when we need to so we can hoard as much interest income as possible. It was a tuition in, oh yes, you we are seeing a declining, so forty five and twenty three, forty. And I'm 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 estimating thirty for next year. Yeah, we talked about this. These are the drivers. Uh and this is the surplus available to us, which we talked about not using because it doesn't help our tax rate situation at all. And then here was the assessment page. We're actually down this year, one of the few districts that is down. So I'm going to pause there and see if there's any other questions regarding this budget.
I was just gonna add the interesting thing about this year is to Allison's point too, we actually could add a significant amount of money into our budget and not see an increase in our tax rate because we're at that five percent cap. So one time expenditures for capital expenses could be added to our budget and we would not see an impact in our tax rate. And I know other schools are doing that, so then the state's going to have to adjust the yield if they they have these unanticipated expenses that are coming through. Because I think that's a little bit of a surprise that that is happening in a lot of these districts. Um so then are we losing out if we don't do that by not including that? So it's either you cut a huge amount or we could potentially add without seeing a change in these numbers that Mike shared.
One of the things that we we were looking at a week ago is that almost nothing we could do, we cut it. Even the most even the most drastic actions by us weren't going to make an an impact in terms of making it lower because of the CLA. And then you brought this up to me, you brought it up to Mark. What I don't know is how many dollars could we add to the budget and where and have no effect on um the tax rate going up? So to get to the dollar forty four before you apply the CLA, how many dollars could we add?
Like nine percent or something.
And then that and then my next question would be, how could we legally add? Because we have cap, we have capital expenditures that would do.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah.
We could add about five, we could add about five hundred and fifty thousand. I just did it, um if you guys can see the screen, so I added five fifty.
We can see it, but we can't see where you.
Okay, so I added five fifty to the fiscal twenty five budget. The year over year increase is under ten percent.
We're just gaming, we're gaming their system.
It just feels a little bit like, what is it, robbing Peter to pay Paul or it feels a little bit like yours, Vermonters too, and we live in the state or a little bit, I don't know.
I think that this this is one of those things that while we can consider it, this is slimy. And if our neighbors are doing it, our neighbors are being slimy and I would, I don't know, I says as much as we need things and as much as if I if you have a capital expenditure. So I know we do have a lot of things we could talk about. I don't know, has anybody?
I have another, I have another way to look at it. So for ninety years, for ninety years, if we are now equitable with this new Act one twenty seven, for ninety years, we've been underfunded and we haven't been keeping up with our building, so you can justify it in that way. We've always, we've always, well, we've we've always had a lower income. Were we were disadvantaged disadvantaged before.
Since 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 this people waiting started.
Right, and even before that, before it started, you could, if you really wanted to tweak it in a different way of framing that. The towns with that are serving more um students in poverty are paying more. Um that's why they changed the model to begin with. So in a way, we've been paying more all the years to support more low low income students.
Go ahead, Mark.
Um, yeah, I I understand exactly, I'm exactly what Molly said, that was Molly, right? Yeah, I understand what Molly's saying and it's a valid point. We've been not been getting our fair share of the ed fund. The problem is is it's a closed system. So to the extent that districts start to gain this by saying, well, I can just keep adding spending in and not see an impact on my taxing on my local taxes, that money is coming out of the ed fund. It's not like magic money that is created when they do that. And so what I am concerned about, uh and I don't have any way to project this right now, uh the what I'm concerned about is that we don't see as a result, if there's a lot of this uh gaming going on, so to speak. Are we going to see the legislature turn around at the end of the session and lower the yield rate? Instead of raising it, which is what we want them to do, we want them to see enough money in the ed fund to raise the yield rate. And if they lower it, the taxpayers in Danville are going to be affected by it because the actual tax bills will be higher than what we projected, so.
I have a question.
Let me just finish this thought. At CCSU, we are not gaming this system in any of the districts. That's all I wanted to say.
I thought about that too. I had that thought that they probably would drop the yield and then it would come back and get us, but we're still we're still over the cap, so and that's all pre like the yield comes into play before the cap is applied. Or um we would still be over the cap, it wouldn't adjust after the cap, you know what I'm saying? The yield is already calculated in.
Ho- hold on one second, we we can play with both of these scenarios, Molly, but I want to be clear. If we added five fifty right now, all things considered, if we added that much, you're right, the homestead tax rate wouldn't change, but you know what rate would change? It would hit the income sensitive rate, people, another point two, you'd go from two point seven nine to two point nine nine. So that would be a half, uh o- over a half a percent increase year over year. Now furthermore, furthermore, I will guarantee one thing, if people in Vermont are gaming this, if this community is gaming this, I will bet my job that yield rate goes down. If they're seeing excessive amounts of increases in spend, I'll guarantee it. I'll bet my job on it that yield rate drops if people are doing that, if they're acting slimy as I like Clayton, the way you put that. So now let's pause. Let's say we did do that and the yield rate went down. So we added our five fifty because we we feel we feel we should, right, to help with the capital expenditures we know are in front of us. No one's denying that. I'm going to change this to ninety one hundred just for simplicity.
So you see, Mike, how it's all before the five percent cap is applied though. I mean, that's where and I do feel bad. It's like we're kind of, we're Vermonters too. It's, you know, we got to think about that, but it essentially is still between that five and ten percent.
It is. So it would it would jack up the the pre CLA rate. And so for towns without that protection, it would really crush them. It it would hurt going lower.
I I believe so, and I think Kingdom East, they're at like nine point nine percent, so I think that they maximize that too. I'm pretty sure. Only if you're over ten. And they're probably, I'm guessing there's going to be changes. I mean, this is just such a mess that I'm sure there's going to be, if if every district is doing this, that there's going to be changes this year, so you know, maybe this would bite us even next year with legislative changes this year. We just don't know.
Another place that it bites us is we're already going to have to explain to our townsfolk why we're able to. And then.
Add another million.
What and then what what you're adding in another million, now you have eight point eight million, so why are you doing it? Because it's nifty, right? Because we can we can put some money. And it's again, right, so our budget is already difficult to explain.
It's retroactive pay. Okay, now, once once you get that number up there, you've been shorting us for the last nineteen years. Okay, now we get this much, we call even, that's how much you should have should have given us. The slimy thing is they weren't giving us our full share to begin with. So if I give you, if I give you a hundred dollars a year, nineteen years in a row, and I'm supposed to give you a hundred and ten.
Like you think about paras, all the supports that are in place that we pay for.
If it's not going to raise the tax rate and we're going to get finally our fair share, it's like retroactive pay, I'm not slimy with it.
So what are the what are the rules on the cap, Mark? Is it the the cap is five percent for the next five years?
You have to, your the increase, the year to year increase in per people ed spending has to be less than ten percent in order to qualify for the five percent cap.
This this comparison here, guys, this comparison we just showed, this has to stay under ten. You know, I I wanted to make a quick comment uh to what Dave had mentioned on the fair share. Um I want to just make sure we we bring this back here. There are communities, Dave, that uh don't get any general ed fund support whatsoever. Their their education is paid for by either all of the residents or a mixture of residents and non residents. So their grand lists are so big that they they're the ones sending money up into the general ed fund. So I just want to be sensitive to 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 communities who don't get any support at all from the state, but actually send a lot of their tax dollars up so that communities like ours under in CCSU get the money we need to provide an education to the kids. That's it.
Yeah, it's a tough.
It also favored a lot of wealthy communities because they're still rural, so they're benefiting from that too. So there's a lot of people who think that the whole LBW ADM is also aimed and is hiding some stuff.
I think you also run the risk if you add that into your budget. There, this is neat because we all sit here and and understand this. Uh there are a phenomenal number of voters who walk into a room and look at a number and go, am I willing to pay that much? And they will, they will not.
And I knew to twelve years ago, it was four point three.
Right, so you you're going to get people who look at a number and don't know that some of it is free money slimy or not. And they're going to vote no, and then we're not going to have a budget and then we're going to have to come back. And great, you get to cut off that much without losing anything, but it's but it's time, it's energy, it's a lot of other things and and the reality of of all of that is perception as well.
Yeah, and just not knowing what legislative changes are going to happen. I mean, they're they're going to have to do something this year and that five percent cap could go away.
I think legally they have to they have to legislate five percent cap, but right now there's a pressure on the legislature to raise the yield. Because so many decisions are effective. And if you see all this, all these people doing all this gaming, there's no longer going to be um pressure on the legislature to raise the yield, they're going to respond to what happens in these big budgets and they're going to press the yield down. And we're not going to, for us, that's not going to matter either, I don't think, because we're still.
No, it will, it will, Clayton, if the yield rate goes down, your tax rate is going to go up.
We just looked at it, Mark.
It it doesn't with the cap, Mark, it's all before, it's all before the cap.
It 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 only in a couple of spots, but it was, because we put it back at ninety one hundred and show us again, Mike.
Sure, it 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 would definitely impact, it definitely would impact the uh income sensitive people.
It is, right, so who who it impacts is the people that make between forty seven thousand and ninety and ninety thousand dollars. Whose number gets affected by that and it would and it would raise their raise their taxes significantly.
And who knows if they make a rule this year that says, well, if you jumped your increase from this to this and you kind of could have ended the system and we're going to penalize you here. You just never know what could come back next year, you know, because this is just so messy that you know, maybe it's not worth the risk and will be ethical and good people.
This is all interesting conversation, but I think we have to work with the system that we have and the numbers that we have. There's all sorts of speculation uh about things that might happen as a result of how they implemented one twenty seven. There's already talk in the legislature about changing some of the rules about, as Molly said, getting rid of this five percent cap and all this stuff because it's having unintended consequences. It's driving up. Uh there's a sense that it's driving up spending, but we don't know by how, we don't know, they'll they'll figure that out. Um but you know, for today, for now, this is, this is a model that we're working in and I think um you know, I think it's just, it 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 doesn't make sense for us to sit around and, well, what if they do this, what if they do that? We don't know what they're going to do. But, you know, people can complain about the yield rate, but if the yield rate is not going to go up if there's not enough money there in the ed fund in order for them to raise. If there's not enough money there in the Ed Fund in order for them to raise the yield rate.
That's what I just said.
Right. So. Capital, once I, to pay for. Repairs are going to be needed next year anyways. You know, it's not like, woo hoo, you get a new car, you get a new car. It's.
If that's acceptable, I mean, that's something you could not do.
But if you get audited, you could do.
That's a, I, it's. This is what we're talking about. We're in theoretical exercise and what we'd like to get back to here is just what we're doing here, which is this budget. That's, that's what the superintendent was just talking about. Is. This is the budget. I don't. I don't feel comfortable adding money to the budget. I know we can spend it. So.
I mean, I know there's some facilities repairs that could be done with some of that, but like if it went to.
I can make a suggestion that we have, we have, if you look at the reserves and drivers, we could, the board could say, look at. Because we're not going to add more money to the budget, but we do have unrestricted surplus. You could make a motion to. Send this money into the Capital Reserve Fund to, for that rainy day when you know you have repairs down the road and don't use it to buy down a tax rate right now.
We're already not using that money to buy down the tax rate.
That's my point. So because you're not, and people are concerned about, I've heard multiple voices. I think with Sarah, it was Dave talking about, hey, we got a lot of facilities. Related expenses we have coming up here. You can make a motion to reserve that money now. Put it into Fund Three right here. And then that, right, make it restricted for, for capital expenditures only. It's just an idea.
That could be done, that doesn't have to be done tonight.
Right.
It could be done anytime if you want to move money from your unrestricted fund into capital, into the capital fund. You can do that at any time.
None of that, so, yeah.
Restricting the unrestricted.
None of that ends this conversation. So I think that the, the part of this that, that most ends the conversation for me is Tim's point. That the person that walks in on the day of voting and doesn't get a say in this and isn't at this meeting and sees a budget number of eight point eight million instead of eight point two million. Is more likely to say no.
With an understanding that we put four hundred thousand dollars and that four hundred thousand dollars is explained.
But where are you going to explain it? Because you're not going to explain it on a ballot. You can't explain it.
It, it's been, everything's been doom and gloom and the buildings falling apart and just say, hey, you know, we were able to get four hundred thousand dollars. I, I guess I'll, I'll tell you what. I don't know if I'm the only one in the room.
Every, everything. Well, everything's doom and gloom. I mean, here's the thing is it would be great to take it. It'd be great. Um, but everything's doom and gloom for people who are in the know of what's going on inside this building. I think there are a, a huge number of people in our community who do not bother with being that informed. I think that there are a huge number of people who live their lives in Danville, they're, do their things in Danville and they pay taxes in Danville. And they come in and they vote. They don't sit through the town meeting. We know that we don't have a huge percentage of our population that sits in town meeting. Um, so they don't hear all of this conversation. They don't hear all of this explanation. They walk into a ballot and they look at a number and they decide if it's acceptable to them. That, that is my concern is that, even when you're adding more money, you're adding more money to a ballot. That, uh, a lot of people do not have this under, most people do not have this understanding of the budget. Um, because you have to really want it to understand it to this extent and to even get that point of. Oh, this was the money that was given, but you still have to be somewhere to hear that, to see that, to know that.
Be a separate article?
No.
Well, then they might see, they'll look at the total, as Tim said, and then they'll look at the tax rate and they won't know that it's actually the CLA. Pushing the tax rate up. They'll think that, wow, they added a million dollars to their budget this year. Look at the total and look at the tax rate and they'll just think that we made that decision versus the complexity that goes into it. I, I'm with you, Dave. I get it. I'm, I, you know, that's why I brought it up, but I think, thinking it through, there's the public piece that is tough.
Just to play devil's advocate, there's also the other side of that where if folks get wind that AJ and other districts are. Do, doing this and they're getting.
Then why didn't we?
Why didn't?
Well, then why didn't we? Right. That is, right.
Could you ask the review board who's going to be assessing that? It's very subjective assessment, but I think we could also be honest to say, hey. This is what we're seeing. This is what we're wondering is the exception to this.
I think it's just the law of the law and there's.
But there is a review board and somebody goes.
Over the ten, over, only, so if you're under the ten, you're like, right.
But I, I don't know if you could gain clarity around that. Like, hey, we're going to have some, we hope we don't have emergency things, but we might have emergency things. Not that I want to give a lot or have it impact those in that bracket, but is it worth a question?
Right. Yeah.
Okay, I, we got to get back to tonight.
Could we address her last comment? If, if other towns are doing it. And then they say, well, why didn't you do it? What are we going to say?
I know what I'm going to say.
We're not slimy.
You're going to say X, X and Y town? X, Y and Z town are slimy, but we didn't want to.
That's what I'm going to say. That's what I'm going to say. I'm going to say. I'm going to say, yeah, if you want me, if, if you.
No, 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 please don't name.
I, I don't want to name names, but.
No, I think it's a hard, I, yeah.
I think you say it's Vermonters money either way.
This is, this is, this is the money for the, the Mott taxpayer.
And I think it's, there's no such thing as free money and it's Vermonters money either way.
I think then it'll be really important in our upcoming messaging, whether it's Facebook or anywhere else. If we adopt the budget as we've written it today, right? That we are clear that we knew we could have increased our budget significantly as maybe some of our neighbors do or might. But that we didn't want to impact our, our lower income residents because it would, right? Regardless. And like, I don't know, I feel like. As transparent as we can be that it would be beneficial. Like, we understand we have all these things. Yeah, we could have put five hundred thousand dollars a ton of places. Here's why we did it.
And the only people that it would have affected locally were people who were struggling.
Well, people who are already.
People who, who, who already have a tax rate.
Oh, yeah.
You, 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 from a percentage standpoint, it would have impacted about fifty six percent of the homesteads.
Yeah, okay.
So, so I think, I think that's your takeaway. It's right here. It's right here.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I think if we can say that's a good point to reiterate.
That's why we didn't do it, right? That's why we didn't do it.
Things like, yeah, probably.
They're probably going to take it away because. It's one of those things where they, they, they created a hole and people are going to get dirty in the hole.
I think it was supposed to help the schools that, um, we're going to see impacts with Act One Twenty Seven, like Stowe's and the ones that's supposed to help. Them not go too high with those weighting changes, but then so many are in this five to ten percent. That are maximizing it.
Okay. So. We do not want to affect negatively fifty six percent of lower income Daniel residents.
Yeah.
We do not want to appear by raising the budget by five hundred thousand dollars additionally to be, to be, have a budget that's more than a million dollars over. The more than a million and a half dollars. Neither one of those things looks true. And as such, can we move back to this budget? Despite the fact that it's free money.
That's, that is what?
No.
It's, it's not. It's Vermonters money.
Yep.
Okay, Mike, go on. Are you done?
I'm lost in words. I don't know what else to, to, to present.
So where we are, so where we are here, let's just, let's just get ourselves a summary and I, I'll do it, I guess. Um, we, the thing that affects the budget the most is the very last action and that's the CLA. And the CLA comes in after everything else happened. We have no effect on that. We cannot change it. And it strictly penalizes Danville because it's point eight five five. Prior to that, our spending is capped at five percent. Or not our spending is capped rather, but the, the increase that we can pay in taxes is capped.
It, it, which is only seven cents, Clayton, to your point, it's only a seven cent increase from the, the year of a year pre CLA.
In our last meeting, we looked at several different exercises to try to lower that rate and could not do it, do it in any, in any significant way. So our reality is. This is the spending and this is the budget. As much as we've looked at it, I was stewing on it last week. Th- these are the numbers. These are the numbers we have to take to the tent. A dollar sixty eight, twenty two cents increase. No, my number's good, my number's.
Twenty three, tw- twenty three.
So even the, the number. Okay, I was over that nine, so twenty three, twenty three cents increase is a dollar sixty eight. And what is the number of the spending for this year? Seven, six, oh, six, oh, seventy three?
No, no, no. Yes, yes.
Yeah. Eight, three, zero, four. Eight, three, zero, four, zero, seven, three.
Yes.
This budget. Okay, so. Where are we, Board? No, it's just one of these, one of these pages doesn't have a top line. Yeah.
Oh, we're going to make a motion. That's where we are. I'm going to make a motion. Of eight million, three hundred and four thousand and seven and three dollars for fiscal year twenty five.
I have a motion on the table. Thank you. I have a motion on the table. I have a second on the table to approve a budget of eight, three, zero, four, zero, seven, three. And I'm, here's the red discussion. Go ahead, Alex.
Okay, just two things I wanted to say, um. One, with hearing what Mike said about the declining enrollment. With forty five to forty to thirty from outside, I'm just wondering, and correct me if I'm wrong. I think there were two new positions that are added in that had been covered by Dave Schilling's, the Estefan Plan, right? These two new positions are added in and that was for the sort of technical program. Is that correct?
It's not, so it's not two new positions. It's, it's two, two point two.
And one of them is a literacy.
And one of them is a literacy specialist. So.
Yeah.
But, uh, one of them, one of them full is one of those positions and point six is also one of them. So one point six of them are in that if you count cooking. And then point six are a literacy, um, an interventionist.
Right. And so you guys have determined that that is worthy from an investment standpoint. To then take that on to the budget verse, because the funding otherwise ran out.
So what we looked at, one of the things that we looked at in the prior, in the prior meeting as one of our exercises was, take those away. What's the net?
Said like half a penny.
No, 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 it wasn't even that. It was take those two away, take four other away and dump in the entire reserve. And then it was half.
And then it was the half a penny.
It was, there was, there was literally, you could dump every, every plan you had into trying to save money and you couldn't get down to more than a penny.
And the one other thing, because I'm just looking at like overall the trend of like, it's been a, you know, a tremendous amount in the past twelve years, like doubled in the past twelve years, the budget. And looking at the increase now, and I understand there's a lot that's out of your control, but I'm just also just questioning with the assistant superintendent. Now that you have a principal in place and the Schilling thing, do you, is there still really that need?
The assistant superintendent position comes in from the CCSU level, not at the Danville.
Right.
So that question is for the CCSU board, not the Danville.
Okay. So they've already.
Yeah, that is.
Just thinking of the overall.
We were looking at, Dave asked me that same question the other day. Uh, that question's come up before. Uh, we, we took a deter, we took a determination of at the CCSU level. Why did we need this? And because we saw gaps, because we saw that there, that, that, the, the district, the supervisory unit is too disparate. And too wide and there's too much work for one person and we weren't going to be able to draw somebody for the job.
Okay. And that's where I was wondering now, is people in place?
So the building principal doesn't affect any, anything outside of the building. So at the CCSU level, this is an.
I just didn't know if he was picking up the slack because of it at all. But anyway, that's.
No, Mark, all the slack is on Mark right now. And there's, and what, what there is, is there's, there's just entirely too much slack.
Okay. And the very last thing I just wanted to point out to everybody, because I think this would be really important moving forward, is if you guys could just take a quick peek on page three. Where it says equalized pupils, the long-term weighted ADM pupils. Fiscal year twenty three, fiscal year twenty four, fiscal year twenty five. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys see how. Now the pupils, it looks like there's five hundred and twenty eight eighty five because of the weighting, but if you just dramatically. When you look at expenditure per pupil, you know, you go to fourteen thousand, three hundred and eighty two. And I just think it is important for taxpayers to understand. That's a lot less than reality.
This is.
So.
This is, this is the big disconnect that we have to convey as a board to voters is that there didn't, used to be three hundred and ten.
Yeah.
There used to be appreciably more than three hundred and ten. And so when you were determining your cost per pupil then, you were determining off a number that was wrong.
Exactly.
You're determining now, based on this new, uh, this, this, this new number put down by the state, you're determining it more on. The, the, the cost of a kid, the weight of a kid, the, the difficulty of educating that kid. And so in, in the estimation of. Montpelier, we have five hundred and twenty eight kids. That's what they're telling.
Right.
It is, we have five hundred and twenty eight levels of difficulty to educate who we have in the building.
Right.
As opposed to previously when they said, you only have three hundred and ten kids. And we say, no, we have three hundred and eighty kids.
Right.
And they say, well, half of them, those are only worth half.
Right.
And then these aren't worth that many and then these are worth. What, so my, my response to you and my response, and I'm going to practice this with everybody else is, in actuality, we have five hundred and twenty eight. Levels of difficulty to educate, not, we, we, if you count them by the head, then you're not getting an accurate count because some of them are whatever. And then if you, and, and like you say earlier, you can't take away preschool kids. They're hard to educate. You can't take away special ed kids because they're, they're very hard.
Filing enrollments, I just want people to also understand that the actual real number of students. Regardless of the weights and the different needs and demands, if you take our budget divided by that number, we're actually paying twenty five to twenty six thousand. If we're going with three forty per student compared to fourteen thousand here. But I just wanted to make sure that that.
That number that you've got again, doesn't have tuition kids in it that we're also bringing in another one thirty. So, but it's, right, these are the things that we have to be aware of when we're talking about.
Yeah. And I just want to make sure that people recognize that as we move forward with the higher costs.
Yeah, that's where we are.
How much does it cost to educate? Like you look in Idaho with similar demographics and rural, they're paying nine thousand.
I, I, in Idaho, don't compare it to Idaho. It's so well funded. All of these numbers are theoretical anyway, because you can't, you can't put a price on what you're paying to educate on average.
And I'm not looking at like that, I'm just looking at like tax base, the actual real numbers of what does it cost for the town. That's the piece I'm just wanting to point out. So.
Is there easy data that says X amount of kids equal this weight, X amount of kids equal this weight? Is that. Possible to put in here or not? Is that too much of a?
So it can be put in the term report because it's not part of the budget.
So, right, you say how people are weighted for Act One Twenty Seven is not part of the budget per se, but it's going to be part of our explaining.
Right.
So maybe if we had that data, we can ask her that after. Yeah, I don't think that, if you want to put that in the budget, that can be, uh, given to us later to use to.
I, I said, I. At the last meeting, if we could have them enroll, the number of kids every preschool, everything. Tuition kids, how many kids are in the building? Three forty.
He, he, you don't want me to tell him. He's wanting you to write it down.
Oh, no, I, I don't want, I don't want to hear about it. I want to be able to look at here. I want someone, a voter to say, well, listen. It's not three ten, it's, that's the number.
Right.
And, and in fact, no, numbers can be put in his beautiful letter that he thinks he's going to write tonight.
Okay, so where I am right now is I have a budget number of eight, three, oh, four, oh, seven, three for fiscal twenty five. I have a motion, I have a second. I, do I have any further questions? If not, I'm going to call a question. So hearing no further questions, I'm going to call the question. All in favor of presenting to the voters of Danville, a budget for FY twenty five of eight, three, oh, four, oh, seven, three, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, me as well. Um, motion carries on that.
Biden, was that unanimous?
Yes, sir, that was unanimous.
Yes.
Okay, all right. For the minutes, I want, I want that to be.
Yeah, it's a unanimous vote. Melissa was a yes and everybody in the room was a yes. But we, I, we don't need to do a roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now. I need to move on from that. I'm going to move on. We have one other, one other agenda item and Mark started in front of him. This is the, uh, the warning that came out this afternoon. You can stick around, Mike?
He doesn't need to. Oh, wait a minute. Stick around for a minute. Stick around for a minute.
That's what I.
Let's just double, I want to double check that I had the right. Eight, three, zero, four, zero, seven, three is what we just.
Okay, can I? Eight, three. Eight, three, yeah, zero, eight, three, zero, four, zero, seven, three.
Okay.
All right, need a quick meeting timeout. Eric's got a question for Mike.
Well, I just, I, there was some, uh, Mike, can, is it possible for you to send the pupil breakdown for FY twenty five? The state has published FY twenty four on the A O E site, but the FY twenty five is not public, I don't think, or is only sent to.
It's not, it's probably not published, but it is public.
Right. Yeah, so can we get that so that we can see? Here's what the LTW A D M is.
Do you have the pupil weights for FY twenty five?
Yeah. You, you want me to send it um to, to the board or to you, Eric, directly? How do you want me to do this?
Send it to.
Oh, I want it.
Send it to the board and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, I, it's, it's gonna be, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll send it to the board right now.
Yeah, if we have it right now, and the principals, if you can.
And Eric.
Thank you, Mike.
And Eric, since he's here. Who's got the question in the chat? Hold on. So.
That was Melissa saying she has to run.
Okay, okay, so. All right, I'll catch, I'll catch up with her on this morning. I'll catch up with her tomorrow morning on this one. Okay. So now the business, now this, we're gonna review, we're gonna discuss the Danville District Town Warning. I'm gonna turn this right over real quick. Mark, you wanna go through it? Do you wanna show me what you, you're gonna take out Article seven? You're gonna take out Article eight?
Yeah, I don't think we're doing that, right?
No, Article seven, eight, or, uh, they're, they're taken out. We're not gonna discuss that one this year. There's, there.
There's a committee.
There's an article.
There's a committee, there's a committee for that now. Town meeting committee. Super good. Should come to the meeting. No, thank.
All right. So let's just walk through this. Let's just walk through this.
Please.
Come into the other. Um, Tom meeting is on March fifth.
Uh, March fourth, fifth.
Tuesday, March the.
Tuesday, March fifth.
Fourth in there.
He hasn't, he changed it.
Oh, he changed it.
Yeah.
It says March fourth at the top. That's March, at the top, it says March four.
Well.
Who's saying March four?
Maybe requested by.
Gotcha, okay.
This would go easier if we went in order. Started jumping around. Sorry, I know I'm sounding cranky, but. Tom meeting is on my, Tuesday, March fifth, correct? The school district meeting this year is supposed to be in the afternoon, correct? At the one o'clock. Because we did the morning last year. We did ten o'clock last year.
That's officially, it probably depends on how it goes. But yeah, that's the idea is the afternoon meeting. We're set.
All right, and Katie verified that with the town clerk, that that's their understanding as well. The top portion will be in the morning. School district will be in the afternoon. Okay? Uh, vote for the budgets by, by Australia ballot. Polls will be open from ten until seven. Absentee ballots for voting can be requested until four P M on the day prior to town meeting, which is Monday, March fourth. That's where the March fourth comes from, okay?
Okay, yeah.
All right. This hasn't changed in terms, I took out two articles that aren't on the uh agenda, so to speak, this year. Elect a school moderator. That's always Article one because somebody has to run the school district meeting. There are two school directors, two one-year terms and one three-year term. Is that correct?
Yeah, I ask this every year and I never get the answer right, and I always forget. Do we have to elect our um treasurer?
Um.
I think I'm sorry. I don't know the answer. The, our treasurer is.
If we were espoused, it wasn't in the warning last year.
Yeah, we do every three years. That's, it's a three-year job.
Oh, okay. Then I don't know.
Let me go. It's gonna be important. I didn't think, I never think of it till just now, and I've thought of it now, and then. I need to look at a twenty twenty one town meeting.
Yes.
One sec, Mark. Mark, so just go, go on and go through it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be doing a little research.
Okay, we might have another one to insert here. But we have the school director. Right, there's two one-year and one three-year that are up this year, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Um, here's Article four. It's a budget article. And we have the right amount in here and do this, write it out, right? Eight million, three hundred, four thousand and seventy three dollars. Okay. Um.
Yeah.
Shall the voters. Shall the voters authorize, um, authorize its board of directors to borrow money to pay its lawful debts and expenses for the fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, twenty twenty five? The amount not to exceed ninety percent of the anticipated collection of taxes and receipts of other funds to be used for those purposes. This is. The article that the, the town gives permission to take out a tax anticipation. Okay? Article six, shall the voters of the Danville School District authorize the board of school directors to hold any, uh, any audited fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, the current year that we're in? In a reserve fund to be expended under the control and direction of the school, uh, of the board of school directors for the purpose of operating the school. This is in the warning every year, and this is what. If, if the tower, if this was not in here or the town was not to pass Article six, you'd have to return any audited. Fund balance next year, and you couldn't keep it. You'd have to give it back to the taxpayers. It would become revenue back to the, back to the taxpayers. And then the last one is Article seven, any non-binding business that may legally come before the meeting. And. That's, that's what I have, and then we're waiting for.
So Mark, on, um, in the, in the warning from March second, twenty twenty one, Article four was to elect a school district treasurer for a term of three years. And so I, Article four needs to be to elect a school district treasurer for, for a term of three years.
Okay.
Okay. That's, it's gotta be Article four. I don't know.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't. I don't. King chicken over here. Let me just go make sure. It's gotta, it's gotta be on there. We gotta do this over again. It's gotta, we don't wanna, we, we, we wanna do this once and then do it correctly. So this, to, to get it correct, that has gotta be correct.
All right. You tell him tired. Four, so this becomes five, this becomes six. This becomes seven, this becomes eight.
The other option is the Google. So, let's, let's just get a couple minutes to.
And our, the district clerk is our town clerk, correct? And so that's not, we don't elect the clerk, the district clerk. We do in some of the districts, but not Danville.
In this town, you know, in this town, the town clerk is, serves as our district clerk.
Right. Okay. Um, so. Did I spell Molly, uh, Melissa's name correctly, or is there any in there?
There's not any in this.
Okay, all right. It always looks wrong when I look at it. Um, okay, so here's the deal. This warning cannot be signed before the twenty second. Okay, and that has to do, has anybody heard any rumblings about any petitions circulating in town that might affect this school district warning?
No.
Heard anything about any petitions?
You might be wondering about choice petition, like habits doing, but I don't think.
Oh, no, I've, I've heard of.
Well, the only, the only factor, Mark, is if people hear that there's a bill that may require that passes any school that goes to choice. To designate three public schools and no independent schools. So if that, if they hear that passes by. It would be an effect in July of this year. If that goes through, it's in the House right now. So the only thing that could come up if people heard that. If there was a group that wanted to kind of get in before that change was potentially made would be the only factor.
All right, so.
No, no, the, the answer to the question is no.
Okay, if by some happenstance, somebody comes in before the petition deadline. And comes in with a properly signed and up, uh, certified petition, we will come back, we'll have to meet again and modify this to include that article. Otherwise, if there aren't any other changes, you can approve this tonight.
No, that's.
And then it will be available for you at the central office for you to come by and sign starting on the twenty second. Okay, and that, that date has to do, is, is driven by the fact that we have to allow, you can't sign it prior to. Uh, the drop dead date on any petitions, for lack of a better term. Does that make sense? So we can't, I, I've been saying the nineteenth, but that's not right. We have to give, the nineteenth is the deadline. The eighteenth is the deadline for. Anybody to submit a ballot petition, the town clerk has two days to certify it, which would be the twentieth. The twentieth is on a Saturday, so technically speaking, you. Cannot sign this warning until Monday, the twenty second. Does that make sense?
So, Mark, when you say sign the warning, in years past, we've gone to the town clerk's office, but my understanding is this year, this is all gonna be put together by Katie? And so we'll be going to the CCSU office to sign this?
Yeah, I think, haven't, have you signed it at the town clerk's office in the past?
In previous years, we walked to the town clerk's office and signed it.
I've done it both.
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't remember that.
But you want us to come to Katie, to, to, to your office.
Yeah, I think you should, you should come to the central office, sign it there. When we have five signatures. We will walk it across the driveway and have Sharon protest it.
Right.
Okay.
So we're gonna make a motion to.
Well, let me, is Sharon's name spelled right?
One L or two Ls?
I think, I'm, the Sharon.
I was, I asked Kate. Katie told me it was two Ls.
Ooh, two Ls, two Ls and Danielle. Okay, got it.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what Katie told me. So I always believe.
Approve the warning.
I'm looking for, I'm, yeah, so we're ready for action here.
District meeting.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second to approve this, this warning as you, as presented here for eight, three, oh. Or oh, seven, three, seven, three. To present to the town in, as, in the warning, in those nine, in those eight questions. I have a motion. I have a second.
Uh. As amended, not amended.
As seen here.
As, right, as amended.
It hasn't, it's not presented yet. He, but he just, he just, he related before us, his motion is for that thing.
Well, no, like.
Right. He was working from a draft. Hasn't been amended. It's that. As presented.
Perfect.
He's presenting it to us.
All right.
Oh, seven, three. Just checking those numbers. Numbers are good. Motion and a second to approve this warning. Any further discussion? Hearing them and call the question. All in favor of approving this warning to be signed as soon as they tell us. Please say aye.
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 Here too. Motion carries. Okay, so we're done, then we're done. I'm gonna go quick public input. Past public input, future agenda items, next meeting date, future agenda items. Our next meeting is the regular meeting. We discussed future agenda items previously. If anything comes up, I'll let you know. If anything comes up for you, you let me know. Next meeting date is our, Mark?
And claim one of the things that we'll, we'll, we'll do, I assume at the next meeting, is confirm the dates for the informational meetings and. So we can get those worn, so those get worn separately.
Okay, so. Informational meeting dates.
That's just one thing.
Okay. Got it?
He knows he's gonna hang, you know, to start the next one.
He doesn't, he's leaving.
He may be.
We got a video, yeah, we got it. Okay, okay, so we got next meeting date, we got future items, seven twenty fours. Anybody wanna adjourn? So we can start the next.
I would love.
I have a motion to adjourn here.
I'll second.
I have a second to adjourn. All in favor of adjournment of just this meeting? Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. So, Mark, you're gonna stop this recording and we're gonna start a fresh recording so they don't get mixed up.